My first choice and only choice, this is a guy. He's a pretty impressive young man. And let me read this and you'll see. Whereas Bishop Dante Thomas, pastor at Elevation Community Church in Bedford, Ohio for the last 10 years. And whereas Bishop Dante Thomas was awarded the Outstanding Citizenship Award at the 2020 Multi-City Black History Month Event. And whereas Bishop Dante Thomas is an ordained minister of the Ohio Ministry Network. And last year, he was elected to the Network Presbyterian, the highest level governing board, which has oversight of 280 churches, over 800 credentialed ministers across all of Ohio. And whereas Bishop Dante Thomas was elected to the Ohio Ministry Network Presbyterian in 2019, made him the first African American elected to such a position in the 74-year history of their network. And whereas Bishop Thomas has been able to foster relationships within business, city government, and schools that has created a holistic development within Bedford and Bedford proper. And whereas Bishop Dante Thomas has a diverse focus of bringing people who look different into the same setting to promote and garner dialogue for healing and unity. And whereas Bishop Dante Thomas has led open forums where both black and white people have discussed the historical and contemporary effects of racial discrimination and racial conflict for the purpose of healing, togetherness, and bridge building. Now therefore, I Stanley C. Coche, Mayor of the City of Bedford, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Bedford, do hereby extend this expression of sincere congratulations to Bishop Dante Thomas, and hope that you continue to strive to make our city and community a better place for the people and the glory of God to rest. In witness, signed by me. Bishop. (applause) I know you'll have a few words. I've been to the Good Pastor's Church several times. You've done quite a job over there. I admire your work and what you've done there and what you're doing for the community. He's also helped with our basketball program over at Ellenwood Recreation Center along with Councilwoman Spinks. And little-known fact that the pastor and several of his colleagues from around the local churches get together every week to sit and just pray for the city and pray for all the people of the city and that we do a good job and for our health. Every now and then, I get a chance to pop in and visit with them. It's just such a moving experience for me, and I know it means a lot to the city. We've gone through some tough times, and now we're kind of moving that needle up. And I know it's the prayer and hard work of you and your fellow ministers that they're all terrific people, too. If you'd like to say a couple of words.
First, let me thank the council and the city of Bedford as a whole, just for your trust in me for these last 10 years. It's been a great privilege to serve our city in various capacities, whatever that may be. We are here. And when I got appointed to be the pastor of what used to be called Bedford Assumme, if you've been here for a while, I said I won't come here unless we could really get a chance to serve the city. I want to be able to serve the city as a church and as a congregation. And so, over these last 10 years that I've been there, it's been a great joy to serve and get the chance to know people, be out in the city, whether it's picking up trash or whatever it is we do, whether we partner with another church or whether we're praying for the city, it's my great joy. So again, I would like to express my deepest and most humble appreciation and sincerity to all of you who make this possible. I feel like there's a hallway of people who could be right here with me, who have been who owns my life. And so, it's my privilege to serve this city. Thank you.
He had a nice little plaque there at the event for the Outstanding Citizenship Award. That's quite a neat little thing they did there. Appreciate just bringing that along for you.
Here, can I get a group photo just for our records? Yeah. For our records.
Oh, you guys grew up in the middle, huh? Thank you. Thank you. Good job, Mayor. Just another example of the fine people we have in the city and doing things to make Bedford a better place. And again, I appreciate all three, I really do. Now it feels kind of that we got to get on to business. I like this part better. Before we get into our reports, I just want to mention one thing that's vitally important to the city, and that's the upcoming census. 2020 census. The forms are being sent out on March 12th. And it's very, very important that we take a complete count of all the people living in Bedford. One big thing, the population, it depends on how much federal money we can get. There's so much that goes on the population, and everybody needs to be counted. They've told us that one of the hardest groups they don't get counted is children under five, for some reason. So if you've got kids, they still count as population in the city. And if somebody's in your house, and I think the date is April 1st, who's living there at that time, you put them down as living here. And it's very important. And the big thing with this information, there's several questions that they ask, but the information is highly protected. And other agencies of the government can't even go in and start looking at census records. By law, they are probably the most protected records we have in the country. They can give out generalities, you know, how many males are in this town, or how many females live in this part of town. They can give out that general stuff. They cannot give out names and say, oh, we know the bishop lives here and he's got 18 kids and they're... Seven kids, right? Seven is enough, yeah. But that general information can go out, but not specifics, they can't get into it. Some people worry about, you know, if I tell them, and I don't even know exactly what all the questions are, but if I tell them this or that, it's going to get out, or... And the citizenship question is on there. Again, this is all very confidential. But it's vitally important to the city that we get an accurate count, because the more accurate we get, I'd like to see our population going up a little bit instead of losing every year. And so, it's very important to get this census. When you get the papers, you can do it online, by the phone, they'll send somebody to your house if you can't do it any other way. So please, please fill it out as accurately as possible. Again, it's highly confidential, and no other organization can get in there and steal the information or even ask for the information. So please, fill that out when it comes, and you'll be getting it pretty soon. And with that, let's get on to reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items regarding some upcoming events that we have taking place, specifically down at Ellenwood. We're going to be putting on a senior health fair, which is going to take place on March 18th, and that'll be from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning, again, down at Ellenwood. And UH will be present, and there'll be a bunch of different things for surrounding health and initiatives. So if you get a chance and available, stop down. On Saturday, March 21st, at 10:00 a.m., the staff at the Parks and Recreation Department are going to be having the town hall meeting. And a lot of that is centered around programming, some of the programming that we offered in the first part of this year. And as the staff works to schedule different types of programming for the remainder of the year, we obviously want input from the public. What would you like to see? What improvements would you like? So if you get a chance, stop down that morning on the 21st, it'll be a good, positive dialogue. There was a question a couple of weeks ago, and we did get some clarity as far as our Code Red system. The city used to pay for our Code Red notification system every year. It would cost the city about $8,000. The good news is, in 2020, we were able to work with our dispatch center and Cuyahoga County, and we're going to be able to provide Code Red service, and it's going to cost the city $0. The bad part about it is, all of our existing data is not going to be able to be transferred over to the new system. So there's some good and bad to that. Usually, every time we send out a Code Red, we get a call from someone, "Take me off the list, I don't want it anymore," or "I moved." We first started implementing that in the early 2000s. So it is a good thing as far as, you know, purging a lot of those numbers that were on there, may not necessarily need to be on there anymore. So you're going to need to re-register for that. So look for information, we're going to be putting it out in the water bill, we're going to put it out on social media, on our website, there'll be another website to go to to enter in your information. And we'll also have some new forms here for you. If you don't want to go online, we'll be able to do that for you, to re-register if you'd like to get those calls. Former Chief Dubert had a good question, and we did look into that as far as various apps or services that block robocalls. We were able to confirm that Code Red is considered whitelisted, so they are not blocked by any of those services or apps that block robocalls. The ones, the numbers that are blocked, they're blocked by illegal numbers that are known as illegal robocallers. So it should, the service that you utilize, it should allow for the Code Red to still go through. So look for that information over the next couple of, next couple of weeks, and make sure you get that signed up to receive the notifications. We did confirm, and we're working with the Illuminating Company, I put in council's memo last week, that they're going to be installing about 450-plus new telephone poles throughout town. So it does make things challenging from our standpoint in working with them. There's more that goes into just pulling a pole and putting a new pole in. We have to mark, obviously, all of the underground utilities and things like that. But again, like the Dominion Project, it's an inconvenience, but these are, this is a good thing. Obviously, they're in town, they're making improvements. We're also seeing improvements with the replacement of some of the streetlights that are out. There's still substantial more that need to get repaired, but there's definitely an effort from First Energy, and our rep is doing a good job getting that taken care of. We do have a number of locations. You may see white markings throughout town, and that's for the 60-plus signs that are going to be installed. Believe it or not, it'll be here much sooner. The majority of them are all completed and fabricated. And then, once the weather really does break, they'll start putting up those signs. Not only is it all new gateway signs, there's signs for the historic district, wayfinding signs identifying the parks, the schools, parking, a lot of different things. So if you're wondering what those white markings are, that's what that is. If you get a chance, I don't know who reads Crane's Cleveland Business, I'll leave this up here after the meeting, but there was a great article last week in Crane's highlighting another one of our local businesses. And that business is The Treehouse in downtown Bedford. And the work that Lauren and Claire are doing is outstanding for the youth. And if you get a chance, great article, kudos to them, they're doing, they're doing great work down there. So I wanted to acknowledge that. Another thing, we did get formal notice, and kudos to our staff. Jen Kuzma and Ani Zagrevik worked to apply for a $6,000 grant that we were awarded. That grant will once again cover the cost of putting on the Shred Days. We're also getting educational material, all about recycling, and that will be distributed at various events. And we are going to start transitioning and replacing a lot of the public fountains in Ellenwood Center, service garage here at City Hall with water bottle filling stations, with the goal of eventually eliminating this. So kudos to the staff for writing that grant. And we'll work to start installing those in the next couple of months. We also received a grant for $30,000 for crack sealing and maintenance. It's through Cuyahoga County. They offer a preventative maintenance program where they reimburse us the cost of materials. And that grant, it's going to cover all of our crack sealing on West Grace from Turney to Broadway, Turney Road from Lee to West Grace, and the rest of Columbus, which we've been doing in phases over the last couple of years. And again, that's $29,000, so kudos to Clint and Sean and Joe Chumi for putting that information together. And lastly, I know there's been a lot of discussion, and we did put something out on social media, and I think it's important for the public to have accurate information. And I mentioned that, I saw something from the CDC last week regarding not only the coronavirus, but viruses in general. And, you know, they talk about the next thing that they're going to be battling is info, referred to like an infodemic or something like that, and there's a concern about false information. We put information out there on our social media platforms last week, and it was as a follow-up to the CDC's release over information, factual information about the virus. What you can do to prevent, not only this type of virus, should it come to our area, that's the right terminology, but viruses in general. You know, washing your hands, just simple things like that are very, very important. Those flyers are available online, they'll be on our website, as well as direct links to those videos that the CDC put out there. So take a minute, look at that, very, very important, and it's best to be proactive. So we'll continue to share that information as the CDC makes it available. And if there's any questions, you can contact us, we will have that information. And anything that goes out on our social media platforms or our website will be direct information from the CDC. So, end of report. Thank you.
Mr. Law Director. Just briefly there, just want to congratulate Bishop Thomas, Ms. Carter, and Mr. Miller. If I can ever help you in your endeavors, don't hesitate. And I also wanted to congratulate Kim Jaworski, one of our staff who recently retired, as of, what, a couple of days ago. So good luck there. End of report.
Thank you.
Mr. Finance Director.
Yeah, two items today. It's with sadness and sorrow that I must mention the passing of our Bedford Rotary Club president, my friend, Michael Falk. Passed away on February 23rd. He'll be missed by all of us. He's going to have a memorial service on this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. It was noticed, it was in the newspaper. Another item, as our law director has stated, that Kim Jaworski, who had worked for the city for over 30 years, recently retired. We had a lot of shifts in our people covering it in the finance department, now everybody moving around. It's quite busy today, like a bunch of little bees moving from office to office. But the net result of having openings in the tax department, which we just filled today, one position, we'll be filling another part-time position very shortly. But you'll see some new faces as you come into the tax department. So, but kudos to Kim, she did a fantastic job as our payroll officer for 30 years. Still going to come back part-time, which is great, to help us with our grants and seal. Do quite a bit of, amount of extensive work in regards to accounting for that and our VowA grant, which is violets against women, so she handles that and helps us with those programs also. It also helps us to have some backup, just in case something happens for payroll, too. So wonderful job, great people, and look forward for her to enter retirement. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes, you're first, but first I want to ask you, are you really comfortable today? For chair, really comfortable?
I guess so.
Just thought I'd ask. I don't know how it got down, but what thing I did...
Chair. Oh! Oh, I can't. It's smaller. How do you even know this? It's like, oh, you're chair.
Is there something I should know?
I was going to wait until next year to announce it.
Anyhow.
Well, I'll make sure it gets returned right away. Thank you, everyone, for coming, I appreciate it. First of all, I want to let everyone know that our First Fridays will be resuming this Friday, the first Friday of March. We will be doing our March for Art again. If you remember from last year, this is where we're going to be showcasing the artistry of our Bedford students. We'll have arts hung up in the various businesses in downtown from a number of talented Bedford High School and grade school students. We also have the Bedford Orchestra, the Bedford High School Orchestra performing for us as our musical act. And as always, we'll be serving a free meal, and there'll be free fun, and the free music. So I hope to see you all down there to help us celebrate these young artists. We are also looking for volunteers to help us staff this First Friday. Want to remind you that the mission statement of the Bedford Downtown Alliance is that we are building Bedford's ongoing story. By volunteering, you help to build those stories here in Bedford. So if you're interested in volunteering, please visit bedforddowntown.org/volunteer. Our volunteer sign-up sheet for First Friday is located there. I also have with me a list of volunteer positions that we have open within Bedford Downtown Alliance. The list is rather long. We are looking for all kinds of help. So if you have a skill that you think you'd like to share and help Bedford improve, please see me or contact me, and we can see if there's a position within our organization that you can help with. Next, a couple of weeks ago, council decided that we were going to be reviewing the employees under our purview here in the city, which involve our city manager, our law director, clerk of council, and then our financial director. Everyone on council completed these forms except for Don Saunders. And I was wondering if Don was willing to make a statement as to why he did not feel that he needed to complete these reviews of these employees.
Well, when I give my report, I will.
Are you done, Henry?
That's all. I just had that question, and I'd really like it to be answered on the floor.
As it is. Mr. Saunders, you're next.
Yes, I know I'm next. First off, I think the way it was done was unprofessional. Our three top professional employees require state licenses, and unless they've done something really egregious, I don't see where there is a need to nitpick little things like a normal common employee in a review. So that's the reason why I did not fill it out, because I think it's very unprofessional to our professional employees to treat them like any other employee in the city. So that was the reason for that.
Before we move on, may I ask a question and response? So I just want to make sure that I'm clear. You don't believe that you're qualified to assess the performance of people that you're tasked with hiring, firing, and giving raises to. Is that correct?
I didn't say that.
Well, you don't...
I said that the review of the employee is given through an overall top, not by nitpicking on little items here and there.
But you just said that you didn't think that it was professional of us as their bosses to give a review, is that correct?
Not in that manner.
And in what manner should we be reviewing them?
Overall look, at seeing whether their job is getting finished, which they have been. So that's it.
And where do we document this so that the public has access to that?
Very easily. It's always in the minutes in the back room when we review them for raises or bonuses.
I don't believe that's correct, because that happens during executive session.
Yes, it is. It's been that way for many, 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 many years.
That happens during executive session. So therefore, there is no record of anything that we judge on our employees.
Well, this is an all-executive session, too, so if you're bringing that...
Well, actually, I actually spoke with John about this prior to this. Any public documents discussed in executive session are not, are not protected by executive privilege.
Well, when you're reviewing employees that carry state licenses in order to be able to do their job, you're unqualified to do that, then.
So what you're saying is that you don't believe that you are qualified to assess the performance of people you're tasked with hiring, firing, and giving raises to.
Once again, that's not what I said.
That's what you just said.
I said as an overall review, as to whether the work is getting done, and that's how you review them, not nitpicking them for little items on whether, oh, this was done good, this wasn't done good, this whatever. No, it's an overall evaluation as to whether their job is being performed to a satisfaction that's needed to be able to run the city. And that's where I draw the line. And I said that it is very unprofessional to treat your professional employees like they're a common, ordinary employee in any other departments or so forth.
Thank you.
So I think there should be a level of professionalism for the top employees.
I think you have answered my questions to my satisfaction. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Don?
Yes, I've got one item, and that's to the city manager. When are we going to start the chipper service back up? Do you know offhand? Because we've had some properties that have had branches out on their tree lawn since last November, and I thought we were at least picking them up and tossing them in the truck and tossing them in a pile so that they didn't stay out there.
Currently, we're on shifts, so that is scheduled as of right now, although, as I had indicated in work session, we're going to be reviewing that. As of right now, that's set to go back to our regular schedule, April 1st, at which point, once the weather breaks. So I would say most likely within a month. I can get clarification on that. If there are some large debris that's out there due to a storm or things like that, just send me the address or the street, I'll take, we'll take a look at it. If not, once we get back on our regular schedule, we can then go ahead and bring that service back out.
Because we did have several storms, and there are people that just put them out on the tree lawn. And like I said, some of them have been there for quite some time. So I will get you those addresses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks.
Got to get my glasses on. Congratulations, Carmen. Said that Bishop Dante left, because I was going to give him good kudos. He's like a brother to me, he is such a phenomenal guy. He has done so much for our city. And though he doesn't live here, but his kids go to our school, so he's in the district stuff. And when I do have my Hoop It Up camp, I could not do that free basketball camp without him, his stepfather, which come in, they're referees or coaches, they donate their time for a whole week. And his father-in-law, he is a stepfather, is on diabetes, so he, he does his appointments around our camp. So it's amazing, him and one of his other deacons come in. I've mentored with his mom at the schools, and just a phenomenal family. His kids are just amazing young men, daughters, wonderful. And Carmen, you know I feel that, I love your shop. It's like, wish I'd be down there a little bit more. I've got things for my granddaughter there, and you are one of our treasured businesses down there that, it's unique, you're always getting something new. Every time I go in there, I find something else new. And Mr. Miller, you're a phenomenal young man. I work in the schools, I, well, I mentor in the schools and stuff, and your name's out there quite a bit, so you're a phenomenal young man, I appreciate that. This month happens to be, there's several, I always like to follow the national, whatever it's going on, National Month. Well, this month, March is real busy. It's March is National Women's History Month, it's, it's March is Poison Prevention Month, and it's also National Art Month. Which, with that being said, last time I was here, I was talking about, I was in a art competition in Cuyahoga Valley at their art center. competition in Calhoga Valley at their art center. I was against some really tough artists, and it just happened to be on my birthday. And I appreciate friends and family that came out and gave me this award. It was really neat. And I won, not only did I win mixed media, I won Best in Show. So it was pretty amazing to have, and it was a really good birthday. And I'm working on another show coming up this month, will it be National Art Month? So I'm thrilled about that. And end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Jews.
Thank you. Well, congratulations, Sandy. Thank you. That was good. Best in show. That's pretty good. I'm looking forward to the new signage around town, because I think that's going to be really nice. And it's not cheap, but the city was able to get it paid for by grants and whatnot. So it was a substantial amount of money, and that's the reason why we haven't had any new signs all along. And there's a lot of good things to look forward to, so it's a credit to our city manager, Mr. Wallace. I think you did a great job. There's a lot of good things happening in this town, and I think people can really recognize it. I want to congratulate the recipients of the recognition proclamations. Community building is one of the most difficult challenges that we have. I mean, it's not really a job that anyone has necessarily, a city council member or member. But I think it's a feeling that we all have individually, especially all of you that come to meetings all the time, because you obviously are very interested in what's going on in the city. And it's just, it really, the city is really the people. I mean, it's just all of us. This is the city. So it's all about relationships and whatnot. So it's just really touching to see the participation, all the various people and all the things that you volunteer for and whatnot. And these proclamations and presentations, the mayor always says it's the favorite part of the job. And I have to take a minute here and congratulate the mayor, St. Cochi, because it's really, it's a really wonderful thing. I mean, people really appreciate it, what you do in that regard, because they know you appreciate them, and that's why you do it. So that's all a good thing.
Thank you.
End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Fluharty.
Okay, let's see here. It's got a couple of things. I supposed to make this announcement last meeting and told Mike I was going to, and it's been two weeks I haven't slept at all because I forgot. But to let everybody know that the school pancake breakfast is April 25th this year on a Saturday, not on a Sunday. So it's been changed, so everybody, if there's anybody who wants to go to this breakfast all the time, to remind them that, first time I think, that they've done it on a Saturday.
Saturday, right?
Saturday.
Okay, so I'm not sure. And it runs in the morning. Of course, you got the art show. Oh, you got a flyer. Oh, okay. So anyhow, I just want to make sure we get that out there. We'll make sure we make that announcement again before it comes up. But again, it's a Saturday, not a Sunday, and I think it's been a Sunday for as long as I can remember. But, so, and also, it's also Dr. Seuss's birthday today. You're mentioning May, March. And it's Read a Book to a Child Day because of that. And I just got a call from my, or a text from my son. It's a boy, Dad, so I now have grandson number five. So I have to get a bigger selection of books here, because I got a bunch of them coming around now. And I have my, between my two sons and my son, we now have two foursomes. So we'll be ready to go. So that's about it today.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Just one more thing, Eric.
I was just going to mention that, but going ahead.
I forgot to mention this, and this was very important. Coming up next Saturday, March 14th, is Putting on the Ritz, a roaring 20 celebration. It is the Bedford Historical Society's Reverse Raffle Dinner and Chinese Octum. This is a very important event. The deadline, you need to get your money in by March 5th. So it was very important that I did. And it's at La Casa Bella Party Center, and it is, there's a $1,500 grand prize. For a $60 donation, you get one dinner and one raffle ticket. For a couple, you get two dinners and one raffle ticket, and it's $90. And all this goes to the historical society. And then just for a dinner ticket is 35. So this is a great event. You can call the museum or go on their website and get your tickets. You need to, like I said, get them by March 5th, which is one of two dates. So, thank you.
Okay. I think we covered everything. Time with business. Ordinance number 9762-20.
Declaring the property and structure located at 591 Broadway a nuisance, and therefore condemning the property, ordering action, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Spinks, second by Janudas. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. It's a property, right before you enter the historic district, it's been dilapidated for some time. We've tried to work with the property owner, not getting a whole lot of cooperation. It is currently vacant. We've had the individual in court to try to address those issues. This is just the next step to try to obviously get some, get that property repaired and of use.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9763-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase agreement for the sale of the real property located at 460 North Field Road with APEC Holdings LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janudas. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. 460 North Field Road is the former YMCA property. City did get that property appraised after we took ownership of it, and that appraisal was roughly $195,000. The property is in pretty poor shape. We did have another interested party that expressed a desire to demolish it. The offer was $50,000. A cost of demolishing the YMCA, the city's estimate that we received was $180,000. Most uses would require demolition and obviously rebuild. APEC Holding is an engineering firm, actually in Bedford, that has leased space. They're a growing engineering firm. They're looking for space. They were actually, because we did not have a facility or building that fit their needs, they were forced to start looking outside of Bedford. They were able to go through the YMCA. Obviously, it's going to take a substantial amount of work, but they want to be here. And this agreement is to sell that property to APEC. Obviously, the reduction of cost also reflects, obviously, the city's intent to retain a business that is going to hopefully approach 20 to 30 employees, and also relocation expenses to go from their current location up to North Field Road. This is just another win for, obviously, Bedford, but I think the former Meadowbrook Shopping Center and rezoning that city council approved last year. This is a good deal, and there's going to be a substantial investment going into that building, and that should hopefully take place pretty shortly. It's the administration's recommendation we move forward with this.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9764-20.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Hall Public Safety to outfit the two 2020 Chevrolet Tahos previously passed and declaring an emergency.
Motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As John indicated, Hall will outfit lighting, radios, decals, et cetera, to the two Tahos that we're purchasing that was previously budgeted for during the 2020 budget process. Hall is a little bit more expensive than some of the other companies that we've worked with in the past, but there's a big difference. And that difference is, instead of us having to take the vehicles out to the site, leave them there, they come here. We utilize and we partner with the fire department. We hit the vehicles in those bays, and they get outfitted extremely quick. And the difference of what we've seen from other companies that we use to haul is, it could be as much as a month, where these vehicles are on the road, ready to go. So it's, from a convenience standpoint, to get these vehicles on the road, what that means is, the sooner we get them on the road, the sooner the vehicles that we're not utilizing anymore, we can sell. We put those on govdeals.com, and we sell those, and we can recoup some dollars. So the sooner we can get them on the road, obviously, the better. And Hall's done a great job. The last few years, we've been working with them.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9765-20.
Authorizing the city manager to purchase one 71 horsepower walk behind Kubota Diesel concrete saw with a 30-inch guard from Colony Hardware Corporation, and declaring an emergency.
It's our wish to put that on a first reading and have a motion for such. Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9766-20.
Authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with AC Lawn Care and Landscaping Company, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and declaring an emergency.
Again, it's our wish to put this on first reading and have a motion for such. By Spinks, second by Janudas. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9767-20.
An ordinance to levy assessments for delinquent wire bills in the city of Bedford, and declaring an emergency.
Have a motion for suspension. Spinks, second by Fluharty. Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Saunders, second by Rhodes.
This ordinance, as we do twice a year for assessments of the wire bills. The county has moved up the date for filing on this, so we're doing this a little earlier than normal. So I asked council to pass this so we could get this down to the county on a timely manner.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And the motion. Yes, can we get a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation to accept the relocation of Olga Zabaroova for her permanent cosmetics business as defined by the State of Ohio Administrative Code, Chapter 3701-9-01F, as body art from its current location in the city of Beechwood to the city of Bedford. And it's a simple yes/no. Yes, you agree with the planning commission? No, you don't agree? Call the roll.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Cochi?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janudas?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
And that brings us to the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, your comment, and try to keep the comments to five minutes. Thank you. Five minutes?
Three minutes.
I have a suggestion. Jeff Tuford, 134, Aaron. I have a suggestion. I know that you're supposed to bring up more information on recycling, and I know that if you drive around the city tonight, tomorrow morning, a lot of times you'll see stuff sticking out of the recycling bins that you know doesn't belong in there. I think it would be a good idea if you were to randomly grab like three or four recycling bins and videotape this. I think it would be an excellent presentation for your award meetings. Just go through and say, this is material that's in recycling bins in the city. This should be in there, and this shouldn't be in there. Because I think a lot of times, I mean, you put the information out, and you have the flyers that they had here that said, this is recyclable, this is not recyclable. But you still see a lot of items that are marked as recyclable that aren't. They're not supposed, I'm sorry, supposed to go into our recycling program.